Okay, I'll call the meeting order for November 3rd, 2021. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge of the
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 All right, first is the York County Sheriff's Department's update notable events. Uh, the first one is, um, is Acton. This is, oh no, I'm sorry. The first one is Chapley. This is the big drug bust on Colly Trachten Road that we all heard about, um, notable event. Next is some burglaries, um, on the U Store Storage on Emory Mills in Chapley. Uh, it looks like the next one is also in Chapley, some, um, converters on North Road in Chapley. Uh, next are converters.
Yeah.
Catalytic?
Yeah, catalytic. Uh, October 15th is in Acton. Um, a couple of residences on Front Street were broken into. Uh, they stole copper piping. Um, apparently there's a second burglary at one of the houses within a few weeks, so they noted that. Um, October 12th, there's some drugs, um, on Hopper Road in Acton. And it looks like a theft of, um, a VCR. Uh, another one, oops.
They're using those things?
Back.
Why would one have been want one?
They're still in there, teach.
October 14th, 70 arrested, uh, so-and-so at his home on Back Road on a felony warrant. Uh, he was hiding in a shed. Uh, we've got a criminal investigation of, uh, DHHS referencing a 10-year-old child, um, possibly being sexually assaulted in Chapley. Goodness. And then the last one, a burglary warrant, violation of bail and theft arrest all on Colly Trachten Road in Chapley. So, um, breakdowns for Acton are attached and I'll, uh, make sure you guys get copies of them, put those for their notable events. Uh, election results from last night, we actually had an exact even 800 people vote, uh, which is good for a November election for, for Acton. Um, all three questions in Acton passed, uh, by more than half in all cases, except the first one's about 170. Got a couple of thank-yous in the mail. Uh, the Veteran Cemetery in, uh, Springvale, thank you for your donations. Remember, we changed it this year. Instead of doing two payments, we're doing one around tax time, so the thank-you letters coming in. Uh, Trachten Center also wanted to thank you, Southern Maine Veterans Association, so we'll hang those out and address the taxpayers. Um, got a very nice card and a very nice donation from the, uh, Friends of Eagles Trace Cemetery. Uh, they made a very sizable donation to the, uh, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, um, for the upcoming holiday. Um, so that's certainly going to come in, in help. Uh, we also got a $500 fuel donation from the Lions Club. Um, so.
Thanks.
Uh, because we are short on it, we just want to make sure we go on the record once again, um, to announce that the nomination papers for the, um, short seat of Board of Selectmen expiring June of 2024, um, are available in the Clerk's office and the deadline to return them is Friday, November 12th. Um, we've had five people take out papers. Uh, one has since changed his mind, but there are four sets of active papers out, so I'd say the notice has hit. Our E-911 signs, um, have been a, have had a good turnout. Uh, so far, I think we've ordered over 20 signs. Um, and we've also ordered the smoking signs, uh, within 25 feet of any town structure. And, uh, Mr. Langley also has some signs that we ordered for him, so staying busy with all of that. Um, that's all I have for tonight.
Warrant bills, all signed up.
Signed.
Yesterday, yeah. Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda. Seconded.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion we approve the minutes of October 27th. I wasn't here, so you.
Oh, well, I guess I'll second it then. All in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
I forgot you weren't here last week. Okay, um, Department of Heck Community Chair Updates.
It's okay, he didn't know I wasn't here either.
Uh, Will Langley, District 1. Uh, me and Adam, yesterday and today, we got all the sand up for the year. Uh, we're just shy of 1,500 yards we put up, so, uh, we're full and still got some salt left over, so we're all set, so.
Yeah, but that's a good reminder that we were going to talk about salt and ask the board's permission, um, in the past, I'm going to say at least eight years, and David can attest this as well. When we go out to bid for salt, we're going to get the one, we're going to get the Cog bid, because the Maine Municipal and, uh, Southern Maine do that on our behalf. We're going to get that bid, and then there's one of the company, correct?
Yeah, Granite State.
And State. Um, can we present those two numbers to you next week? Or do you want an official, you know, or we can do the official posting. Is there anybody else that could possibly answer the ad?
No, I mean, those are, those are the only two, because.
I mean, can somebody, not to interrupt you, but can somebody that in the Cog, can they bid separately? They could technically?
They could, but they don't.
Okay.
They typically don't, but.
What would that be, Morton?
Well, you got Morton, but Morton will bid in the Cog.
Okay.
I didn't know if they don't get it in the Cog, they can still bid.
Yeah, you got Morton, and then you got Granite State, which is.
Right.
Right.
Got a new name now, but, yeah.
But, uh, you know, typically we go with Granite State, because they're usually the same number as a Cog, and the, the guys that haul from Granite State live in water, but they do return trips, homes, works out well for us. But, um, obviously, you know, until we know the numbers, we haven't got.
No, we haven't. Will, Will and I just talked about it today. We didn't do anything with it until we could talk to you about, do you want an official posting, or do you want me to get both of those numbers in writing, and we'll present them next week?
Officially posted it because it's, you know, it's pointless, because it's only.
Yeah, I don't think we.
I'd say just get the numbers and present it next week.
We'll work on that for next week.
All right.
Anybody else? Okay. Uh, where are we here? Old business, there is none. New business, large truck traffic complaints. So, I had this added on to the, um, agenda tonight, because I, I got a complaint last night.
A couple, right.
A couple last night, and then I got one today, another one, and, uh, they're all in relatively the same area of, um, H Road. Uh, the complaints are stemming from, um, driving really, really fast, um, engine noise, um, time of travel in the morning. Um, so, um, I did explain to them that we wouldn't discuss this tonight, um, see where we can go from here. Um, so, um, I think at this point here, oh, here we go.
So, well, he's kind of filling you up. The residents, just so everybody knows, the calls generally come into the town office first, the town administrator, and, um, generally they want to speak to the, um, give their complaints, and then they want to speak to the chairman as well. So, we pass them off on David. These aren't people calling him directly. They used to call me first, and then, uh, they want to speak to the chair. Two of them, one of them actually came into the office very upset. Um, We have spoken to the Sheriff's Department. We did this last time, remember, um, Mr. Sh, Mr. Short, um, has a lot of concerns in that area. Uh, we've spoken to them, we've spoken to DOT, um, you know, the sheriff says they're doing the best they can, there's short staff, there's drugs and thefts and, you know, other things going on. Traffic is not a big priority. Um, and they'll continue to look at it, but.
Well, um, when I, when I talk to the individuals, um, about, you know, the speeding and all that, the other complaint was that, you know, when they're going by the house at 5:30 in the morning running their engine brake, and which is kind of silly, you know, it's like I have a red flag doing that, but, um, so when, and this has been going off quite a while, um, he named off the companies that were doing it, and, um, there is something we can do.
I think we should.
On that part of it.
Right.
Because what they, these guys are doing is unfortunately they're starting way too early. Um, uh, I think one of the, uh, the outfits that were complained about, um, says, um, what time's it starting? 8 o'clock? Is that, is that right? 7:00 AM.
7:00, yeah.
And that's supposed to be starting until 7:00, and the trucks are being loaded at 5:30 in the morning. So, unfortunately, it's, it's, add salt to the wound. They're driving by really fast, and then they're doing it super, super, super early, and which is bringing up more issues, so, um, I.
Not only fast, wasn't somebody driven off the road?
Someone ran off the road, and I can say my, my wife was one of them people that got run off the road.
But this was a different one.
So, this is a different person that called and complained, but they got run off the road. Um, so.
We have the sign. That should be the first, I would think the first thing is, call the, um, Sheriff's Department, tell them we want it moved.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't know if putting a blinking light and blinking sign, I mean, I did.
But I'm just saying, I mean, I think that, that would be our first, first step.
But these are, so if they're operating, if they're operating outside of these hours, that's a planning board conditional use violation, correct?
Yeah.
Which the code enforcement's job is to enforce that, not the Board of Selectmen, is that?
Code enforcement, yeah.
So, we've notified him that there are complaints prior to these start times, and what they're looking at in front of them is the start time of some of the different, um, operations in the area.
And, and this isn't the first time this has been brought up. I mean, um, I, you know, um, Creek Creek Monarch, there was complaint up there. Um, they've been surveilled, and, um, they, they're not starting until 7:00 now. They were starting at 6:30, and now they're starting at 7:00, and, um, I did get a call from them. They were, they were, they were kind of, um, wondering why it's not being enforced everywhere, as if they have to do it. And then when these calls came in, it's just, now it's kind of snowballing, unfortunately, and it kind of stinks, because, you know, it only takes a couple of bad apples, go way too fast, and next thing you know, everybody's getting the wrath of it. And, uh, so, and we, we, we have talked to these individuals. I did call one of them today, because we didn't talk to him, them.
The CEO did speak to him today.
He did also, but I did, um, because we, we'd called the other, the other pits, but we didn't call this individual. I didn't realize that individual had opened up a pit, and explained to him that this is what we've got to start doing here. I asked him his time of opening, and he said, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." They're going by that, hopefully, and.
Had the last one on the list?
It's interesting how some of them are different times.
Why is the last, why is the last one on the list have a different time?
Because that, I mean, that one has been 20-plus years. That, so the conditional use, according to the CEO, the conditional use that the planning board puts, that, you know, agrees to on a particular property stays with as a property sells, it can stay with the new owner.
I think it's not all the same time for all of them, though.
We have to ask the planning board that.
I mean, I would think the planning board would have.
It's interesting, because some of them have 30 truck limits, some have 80. I mean, they're all kind of all over the place, but.
But, but it all depends, too, on the roads that it was on, like one's on State Road, so we can't really mandate that anymore, because I don't know why they even put that on there.
So, it's a planning board, though, that sets the hours?
Right, and, and the code enforcement has a, he has a method, I mean, if, and, I mean, just to back up, they had, they had gotten complaints only on one originally, and that's the one he started to enforce, and then it started, like you said, snowballing, so he knows he's going to start looking at these.
Well, it snowballed, because when the complaints came on about the speeding, then those complaints came also. And so, um, and, and I did, uh, tell these individuals that we were going to address this tonight, and, and, because there was some concern. Uh, I know all these guys, I, you know, I, this is what I do for a living, so, um, but obviously, uh, they're not slowing down. Um, and, uh, we're going to put up our street sign first.
Yep, I emailed somebody.
Speed limit sign up. We're going to ask the Sheriff's Department to put a little bit more, uh, surveillance up there.
And the CEO as well.
And the C, and, and our code enforcement. So, and, uh, if it doesn't improve from there, and, and, and the times they start, uh, that's something he's going to have to start enforcing, because he's enforcing it with other ones, he's going to enforce it with all of them.
Well, now that he's got other complaints, he certainly will.
Yep, so, um, okay. So, drive slow. Uh, IFW letter.
So, Inland Fisheries, uh, sent a letter. It is fairly lengthy, but they would like it read aloud for the record. Uh, they want to make sure that the board has heard it and understands it, and especially where it's a, kind of a to-doing on West Shore Drive, so. Uh, I'm writing regarding the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, Square Pond Water Access Facility in Acton. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has brought to our attention that the town of Acton has recently discussed a potential replacement of the culvert over the Styles Brook inlet to Square Pond on West Shore Drive. As I'm sure you're aware, this culvert provides critical public boating access from our launch facility to the pond. Without adequate passing through the culvert, safe public access to the Square Pond could be diminished. The waters and lands of the Maine's great ponds like Square Pond are owned by the people of the state, the department, and is dedicated to ensure fair public access to them. The West Shore Road culvert appears to have deteriorated over the years, and we understand the need to replace it to ensure safe access for homeowners on the west shore of the pond. However, it is critical that any replacement structure ensures safety and access for boaters to Square Pond. The replacement of the culvert provides an opportunity to improve boater safety and access. The department purchased the Square Pond property in 1996 and developed the site soon after, utilizing both state and U.S. Fish and Wildlife funds. Our ownership extends to the center of the line of West Shore and would likely be directed impacted, would, and would likely be directly impacted by the culvert replacement. Additionally, in 2018, the department invested more than $120,000 in the reconstruction of the facility to make it ADA accessible. In November of 2020, we were notified through the Town Road Committee of an application by the town for funding to assist the replacement of the culvert. At that time, our staff communicated the department's concerns and the proposed culvert design and the need for consultation regarding this. The town did not respond to our request for initial information. Through the process, we also learned of an earlier request by the town for MDEP funding. That request was unsuccessful in part because the town didn't consult our department. The department would like to work with the town to develop a culvert replacement project that would improve safety for those who rely on it. The department's chair planner would be happy to work with the town on this project. In the meantime, would appreciate any information you can provide on the culvert projects, project, including plans, grants, application, permits, permit applications, road committee and public hearing minutes, and all Board of Selectmen approval. Thank you for your attention in this request. So, they like all those things.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm just thinking, I mean, uh, as you read that, you know.
Sounds like they want to be involved.
Somebody ain't throwing any money at us to help us do it, but, um, yeah, okay.
Both have the plan.
So, they're, they're stating that they owned a center line of that road?
That's what it says.
Huh. The center line of.
So, they own half that over.
West Shore Drive?
Yeah.
Well, they own part of the road.
I mean, and I'll double check with the, the Road Committee Chair, but I feel like at this point, I mean, anything, or maybe William can, can help me out here. I mean, the culvert project, including engineering plans, grants, applications, permits, I feel like at this point, everything this year, they've already been included from the beginning.
The head guy was up there.
I'm not, I'm just wondering if we have anything. I don't want to not.
I'll, I'll call the guy, maybe that would have been on the.
Are you on this list? Did you get CC'd?
No.
Him and Dave calling. I'll get you a copy of it. We'll talk about it tomorrow.
Okay, well, start with that right now.
Yep.
Poll permit.
Uh, this is for Sanborn Road.
It's the extension there from. Yeah, that, that's the extension there. That house they put there down past our Hutchins.
Across the street?
No doubt further.
Okay.
There's, there's a new house, and there's another one where they just put a pad in.
Yeah, I just saw the pad tonight.
So, that's how far down? Going past you?
Quarter of the way down.
Okay.
For me.
Before you get to the salt shed?
Yeah, around the left there.
Yeah.
That new, uh, excavation.
Okay, I already say, yeah. On each side, actually, it's for two poles.
Yeah.
On each side of the road. Okay, yep. We make a motion on these, correct?
Please, Sam.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the poll permit for Sanborn Road. Uh, looks like poll number eight. I guess that's the closest we can come to a address on here.
Poll eight on Sanborn Road?
It says poll number eight. Yeah, starting, uh, starting point CMP poll number eight. And it looks like it's going 425 feet. So, two poles.
All right, I'll second that.
All in favor?
And I'll, all three sign this note. We usually do, don't we?
Yeah, please.
Spot right there probably for the chair. Uh, what's today's date?
Third.
Okay, Man Road Property.
Freedom of Information. Back up one.
What's that?
Back up to the Freedom of Information.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Freedom of Information request. Been a long day.
That's okay.
Uh, the first one, we've got two. First one comes from, uh, Mr. Jeff Donahue, and formally requesting records of the discontinuance of Buzzel Road as required by Title 23 MSRA 3024. And then, um, also I'm requesting the information as described in Title 23 MRS A 3026A, copy of the public hearing and a copy of the town meeting where the discontinued road was voted on by legislative body.
Buzzel Road?
Buzzel Road. All right.
Got to comply to it.
Yep, well, so you do, and I guess that's the, the question, and I talked to, to Lankowski a little bit about it, to review some of the statutes, and, but there's a difference between complying and turning over information and, and finding the actual research. I do not know the answers to those two. If the two, any of you know the answers to it or can point me to a year, that would be great. I pulled the Buzzel Road file today. Cheryl, felt like that?
Yeah.
Um, some of the Buzzel Road records start in the 1800s. Um, I'm not going to interpret what those discontinuances and acceptances and the roads and the rods, I mean, that's not my area of expertise. Um, Lankowski recommended that I ask more on a follow-up question, which I'll do tomorrow. Certainly, anyone's welcome to come in and, and review and, and come up with their own determination, um, but doing a little more digging into those, those statutes, I mean, there's, there's a difference between, I want all the expense reports for five years, pulling the information, you know what I mean, or coming up with a, I mean, I just, I'm going to be honest, I don't know where to start looking for some of that. I mean, do you guys?
I don't. I mean, Buzzel Road, was that one of the roads that was in that list of?
But it goes, but it's way before that he's looking for. It's not that list.
I mean, the discontinuance, you asked for, can you read that again?
Yeah. Formally requesting record of the discontinuance as required by Title 23 3024, so I guess I need to pull that, and then.
Really, what he's, he's looking for the last time was discontinue, which would be that small section, it should be, I would say, oh, 506.
Discontinuing then, or did you stop plowing?
That was the.
Private roads that you were just, you knew you were plowing as, as private roads? That wasn't, was that a discontinuance?
Did you vote? Like, did it go to?
And then the other one is the copy of the public hearing and a copy of the town meeting. Well, the town meeting, that's, I mean, that, if they're town meeting records, I should, you know, I should find that, but, um.
Was that on the list of, what was the other one? 2009, 10?
No, no, so you're talking about the one that got put in there when they tried accepting them.
Yep, but we also, didn't they discontinue some roads that day or not?
No, no. What they did is they, uh, they closed, you're right, they did. Um.
That might be a spot, I don't know.
Uh, Orchard Road, and there was another one, I thought that we closed the Gates and Buzz. Um, but what he's asking for is the discontinuance of Buzzel Road itself.
Do you have any idea what year to start looking in?
I don't.
I believe when, when I was going through the paperwork the other night, um, I, I read a thing that Dave Cody, because he was the head of the, uh, I believe that was in 06, that, that, that meeting.
Couldn't find the town meeting records. I can't find that. You've mentioned that. I couldn't find anything in 06. So, we'll keep digging. I mean, then.
But it could be the year before, too, because I, because that was a long time ago now, but I don't believe when they discontinued, they did it cold turkey.
No, probably not.
It was early 2000s anyways when they did it, so.
You think it was discontinued, it was in the 2000s?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We were supposed to have done it much earlier, and we didn't. Um, eventually the state forced us to do it, so it should be a list of roads, such as 13th and 7th and Loop and all of that.
I mean, I remember when you stopped plowing those private roads around 06, because they were, the determination that we weren't supposed to be spending town money.
Those are it, those are the roads.
But that wasn't a vote to discontinue them, was it? I thought that was just something you just stopped plowing them one day.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was, but dis, it was.
He's looking for a vote, though, right?
Maintenance. We weren't allowed to maintenance, maintenance off, because the state said we couldn't.
Yeah, no, I, I, I remember that. I just didn't think you voted on, but I'll do some digging. That's the problem. I mean, you know, we're a small municipality.
What he should be asking for.
Have the resources.
What he should be asking for is proof of.
Yeah, anybody.
Being voted on as a town road.
Yeah.
Not the discontinuance, because the unfortunate part about it was it wasn't supposed to be done in the first place. So, you can't discontinue something that wasn't a town road in the first place.
But it was a town road.
But we can, we can stop maintaining it. It was never a town road, no, that section. We can argue to that point.
So, wait, wait a minute, if it's not a town road, why am I looking for a discontinuance? So?
So, if it wasn't a town road?
Part of Buzzel Road is a town road. The part that got discontinued beyond the why is what we're talking about.
So, if it was never a town road, then.
Why would they vote to?
Why would there ever be a vote to discontinue it? I feel like I'm chasing circles.
There was a vote to discontinue plowing and maintaining private roads. That's what you're looking for.
Okay, okay.
And that was a private road on the list.
Okay, I'll sit down and find it.
Okay, uh, where are we now?
Man.
Man Road Property.
Uh, there was a fire of a camp, of property owners that do live on the same property year round, um, on Man Road, that we're looking for you to waive the building permit fees and the planning board best practical location fee. Um, it is something you've done in the past for pretty much all fire victims in Acton. It's map 208, Lot 13.
I'll make a motion that we, excuse me, waive the fees for the permits for Lot 208, um, for map 208, Lot 13.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
That's just the rebuild fees, anything tied to the rebuild.
Resignations.
First one is clarification from Roland Waterhouse, um, that he is in fact resigning from the Capitol Improvement Committee as well. Uh, he came in now on October 28th and made that clear, so looking for a motion for that one.
Make a motion, we accept Roland Waterhouse's resignation for the Capitol Improvement Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
If I don't do the other one, will it just go away?
No, you can do it.
Dear Jennifer, I'm writing this letter to notify you, the Board of Selectmen, that I'm resigning my position as a town administrator assistant. My last employment date will be November 17th. Past three years have been incredible. I have been, really enjoyed working here, and thank you for the opportunities you've afforded me. However, I've been offered a very lucrative opportunity, which both my husband and I will benefit from tremendously. Being your assistant has not only taught me about municipal government, but has also enhanced my professional connections to the point where I believe we've become great friends. If there's anything I can do and any means to continue to help those connections, please don't hesitate to ask. Cheryl Driscoll.
We're going to miss you.
Now, if we don't accept it, she's still leaving.
Can we try that in Chapley?
Yeah, we've, we've tried every aspect.
Yeah, it sounds like a good job.
Yes, congratulations on that.
It does, and.
We're going to miss you.
Happy for your, yeah, for your step up in it, but we are definitely going to miss you, so I'll make a motion, we accept with great regret her resignation.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
I think we probably ought to look at all the wages with all the employees in town.
Well, I mean, we, I think we've, we've started inching our way out.
We have, but.
You definitely have, because some of them are catching up.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of catch-up to do, unfortunately, right now with the, you know.
The market is, is huge for those that want to work. We're running into the same problem in Rollinsford, um, because I'm getting done down there. That's going to be several two or three dollar increase to the person coming in, because they, to get someone. And they've also got problems with just trying to find help in general for, you know, and to keep everybody where it needs to be. And I think every town's in that, and every town is competing.
Every business right now is doing the same thing.
Yeah, every town, you know, every employee, every town is competing with each other as well, so those that stay on the cutting edge of it will be the ones that will survive it the best and keep their good employees.
And the towns are making offers that, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, look at Farland, that's a perfect example. 25 years in Chapley.
Yeah.
Nobody would have thought, you know what I mean, should go to Alfred for.
Right.
Few more years, and.
Right.
Some of these towns are reaching out.
Yeah, they are.
There's some benefit packages that are being offered in some of these jobs. It's hard to refuse them.
So, I think, I think we need to look at where we are now, see if we can do anything to. So, I think, I think we need to look at where we are now, see if we can do anything to help those that are here now, and try to retain, and definitely come budget time. Except, I mean, we've, we've kept the, kept the tax rate where it is, if not dropped it a little bit. But I think, I mean, without the employees, the town is nothing, so.
Well, we made a big change this year, you know, with our treasurer. We gave her degrees, because she really deserved it.
We do.
And we gave the transfer station small ones, but, you know, everything's, you know, we want to obviously try to go baby steps, but at some point, we're gonna start catching up.
Some point, you gotta take a bigger step.
Even the transfer station, you know, the superintendent, we've moved that one up. I mean, the CEO, you've moved up, you know, they're all, you know, starting to catch up.
Something we have to look into when we get.
It's something to keep, you know, keep in mind, so.
So, that's something that the department heads should be looking at. Going forward. Okay, we all done the resignations? Okay, public comment. All set? I guess we don't have any public comment tonight. We go to announcements. November 8th, Conservation Forest, 7:00. November 9th, Road Committee, 6:00. November 9th, Warrant Finance, 6:30. November 10th, Board of Selectmen, 6:00. November 15th, Record Committee, 5:30. November 17th, Board of Selectmen, 6:00. November 18th, Planning Board, 6:00. November 24th, Select, Board of Selectmen, 6:00.
I think I missed, I missed a planning board meeting tomorrow. Is there a planning board meeting tomorrow? Yeah, I missed, I think I got over deleting. There's a planning board meeting tomorrow night as well.
There's a planning board at what time?
Six.
Six, so, okay. You guys got anything?
I don't.
Maybe just one small thing. My last meeting.
So, it's his last meeting.
David knew that, and it was that, he's.
What's that?
I said, you knew that was his last meeting already.
Yeah, I, I did, I did. It's, uh, sorry to see you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry to be leaving, but it's been an incredibly learning experience over the last ten years, and one I've thoroughly enjoyed for ninety-nine percent of the time. But it's like running a business. There's always parts of it that are tough, so, but I have enjoyed it, and I thank the public for putting me in this position. I hate the idea that I'm leaving in midterm, but we all know why and where and how, and it's not like I've just decided I had enough, because I haven't. But, yeah, moving on to the transfer station, and as the rules and whatnot say, it wasn't, it was, you know, I can still run for this position after I leave it, so who knows what will happen in June? So, but then again, I might just enjoy the break, too, so. But I do want to thank everyone for their support and understanding why I've been here, so. And the incredible staff that this town has, both in the town hall and around, so. Jennifer's been a huge help to both me and the board, and, and her support staff as well, so. If I missed anybody, I'm sorry, but thanks.
I hate to see you go, Ed. It's been nice working with you, really.
It's been awesome, yeah.
You know, you've, you've taught me a lot, really, you know, and I just, we're gonna miss you.
I guess I'm gonna miss being here. Every Wednesday night for whatever other nights. Oh, I'm gonna sit out here with the.
Okay.
With the fun kids and heckle, yeah.
Oh, no, we don't allow that. We don't heckle from the audience.
Well, good luck on your new endeavor.
You've done very well with the sound, Ed.
Thanks.
Okay. So, there's five, four candidates out there that need some signatures, so.
There is, there is. Four good candidates.
Signed up.
Yeah, as I told one of them, I said, you got, this is gonna sound right, but I told him, said, you've got a big, big set of shoes to fill. I said, mine. She got a big chuckle out of that, so. But, yeah, no, there's four good candidates out there, so it's, it's nice to see that, too, so. Anyway, with that, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?